Go ahead and call the September 10, 2018 meeting to order. The first item on our agenda is closed meeting specifically be it resolved that the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby enters into a closed meeting for the purposes of discussing the following. Section 2.23711 consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring provision of legal advice by such counsel. And one, old BMS development agreement. Second item is discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplinary, or resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employees of any public body. One, board of equalization. Two, personnel. Is there a motion?
Second.
There's a motion by Supervisor Shepherd and a second by Supervisor Biggs. Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Demott?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bowe?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven ahs.
Is there a motion to come out of closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Sorry.
That's okay.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Demott?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bowe?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven ahs.
Certification of closed meeting. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, whereas Section 2.23711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia, hereby certifies to the best of each member's knowledge that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. And this certification is our Board's word to you that we're not discussing matters that we're not supposed to in closed session. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Demott?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bowe?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven ahs.
Next item on our agenda is a moment of silence and then the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd ask the county administrator to lead us in the pledge. As we look back on what happened 17 years ago tomorrow, I'd ask that we reflect on the first responders who are still dealing with the effects of responding to that crisis in New York, as well as all those who love lost loved ones and the brave individuals who took down the flight in Pennsylvania.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
And I didn't mean to omit the individuals who tragically died in the Pentagon as well. Next item on our agenda is a presentation from VDOT. Mr. Clerk?
Good evening. Just a little bit of an update on what we've been doing through the last month and I'll let you know what we are planning for this week, the end of this week. Most of it's been just sort of normal maintenance activities. I've got a list of roads, some gravel roads, and they're most in the southern part of the county, although we did do Poverty Creek Road. We try to just try to get, put some stone on and grade out here at the end of the summer. We did do, some of our major projects have been, there was a major pipe replacement on Wake Forest Road. You're aware of that, that went on. That took, we had to close the road for a while and actually got a little shuttle bus that were able to shuttle people around to get them in and out during the time that that was, that was closed. That's been the second major pipe placement we've had to do on Wake Forest probably in the last five years. Different pipe, but there's some big drainage goes through there. We also did one on Fairview Church Road, a couple smaller ones on Broad Shoulders and on Poplar Hollow. Had some flood damage on Coal Hollow Road just recently that we've been working on, more heavy rain kind of stuff, but I guess it was a flood in that one, right there near the railroad underpass on the unpaid side. And then just sort of, just sort of general potty patch. We did a lot of large type patches. We did some in Plum Creek, maybe something on Route 8. We're paving on Route 8, the park of Route 8, so the north end of Route 8 used to be these long patches. Just trying to keep that together. That'll get overlaid next year. Also done some on Huffville Road, Meadow Creek Road, and on Walnut Springs. And then we've been doing a revenue sharing project. This is where the county has paid for half of this project on paving a section of Brush Creek Road. And we've done some grading work on the sides. We've got a grade, we're trying to get the pipe in. Hopefully try to get it in this week and hope they hold. And then we'll reevaluate after the weather passes through and hopefully be paving that in the next few weeks so we'll get that part of Brush Creek Road. That's the last section that the county has done for revenue sharing. And I think that's about it for the updates. Again, we'll still be, we sent out an email to all the counties that we do. I think Mr. Meadows got an email from our maintenance manager, Daryl Sowers. He and I have been working real close together, several conference calls, and they'll continue tomorrow and the next day as we see where this hurricane's coming. But we're getting, getting all our equipment together, making sure the chainsaws run, talking to our contractors, or we got contractors on call for tree removal, some of the big kind of stuff. And we're working closely, making sure all our contacts are up to date with AEP and try to get through this thing. And the whole state is on this, obviously, because we don't know exactly where it's going to hit and how it's going to affect us, but we've been, we'll be preparing all week and see what happens come Thursday or Friday. I'll take any questions, I guess the Board has.
Supervisor King?
Just one on Fairview Church. Where we at on our low water bridge?
It's, we've got the design. As I said before, that design is going to be tough. It's not going to, this is basically a replacement.
Right.
It's always going to function kind of the way it is. We tried to see if we could upgrade, upsize it a little bit. And again, the more you upsize it, the more, because it's a pipe and you're restricting the water, you're starting to back it up. And that's basically illegal. We can't do that. But we've got the design on that. And again, that's using secondary construction funds for that because it's beyond maintenance and we can't use unpaid road money on that. So next year, we should have enough money to do that.
Could we send somebody out there at least clean the ends out?
Yeah, we can clean out, yeah. Yeah, we can do, we can do that part. That's just normal typical maintenance and it doesn't require money.
All right, thank you.
Supervisor Fidzikowski?
I would just like to get someone to maybe go down to Bull Hill Road out there in Sugar Grove and check on the gravel portion of that road. It's been reported to me that it's, it's in really bad shape right now. And of course, I don't know what will be left of it after the storm if we don't get to it. But also, and I think I've asked you this question before and I've forgotten, the bridge on Mount Pleasant, is that a design build?
No. We're working on the design to put that out to bid.
Okay.
Separately. Our bridge office is doing the design.
All right. Well, best of luck this weekend.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Demott?
I don't have any questions for you, but I do want to commend your staff on being responsive to citizens. I know that we have some people that have reached out about the North Main interchange and some problems and issues that are being had there. And your staff has, or the VDOT staff has gone above and beyond to address those issues. And I really think that that has gone very well. It's gone a long way towards making sure that citizens feel heard. So I do appreciate that.
Well, thank you very much. And it's been a tough position for all of us. We're the people designing or building this. The design was very, not what it should have been. We made some modifications in the field on the guardrail on North Main to try to accommodate turning movements there. We're still working on some of the crossovers and the decent lanes, but appreciate that.
Yeah.
And we'll continue trying to listen to people, make sure they get their answers.
Thank you. Thank you. It's very appreciated.
Supervisor Biggs?
I just wanted to thank you for the I-81 meeting that Steve and I were able to go to. And one of the things Steve and I had talked about and told our Jennifer about, our PR person, was maybe putting a link on our website so our citizens could make comments directly about I-81.
Sure.
And so I just wanted to clarify, they can be like any concerns they have about I-81 or the way it impacts them in their travel, or is that what you're looking for?
Sure. Yeah, there's something to corroborate the data that we have. If you see, if you go on the website and see some of the display boards we have, and it shows I-81 and some of the proposed improvements alongside another map of I-81 that shows the, categorizes the problem type areas where you have congestion, where you have, you know, like daily congestion, where you have most of your accidents, percentage of trucks and things like that. It's a variety of things going on on I-81. And that's one of the things the presentation pointed out is that 95, let's say, around Richmond and up in DC, well, yes, they have a lot of congestion. It's also fairly predictable on the rush hours. Out here on I-81, you know it's going to happen. You're just going to wear it and you don't want to win. You don't want trucks on the sideways and how long the vacuums want to be or how long it'll take to, and it's the predictability and the reliability of it as a transportation facility that makes it, makes it tough. So yeah, anything that they want to comment on that. And I'll find the official, we had this public hearing taking comments, I'll find the date that they are trying to cut off taking comments. But I think they'll take comments anytime. This is going to be an ongoing process and there'll be other chances for input, but if you could pass it, you know, the timeline, I'm sure they'll still take the comment.
Yeah, I'm thinking in Montgomery County, you know, when you have to come up 460 at 11, you know, when you have an accident, that, that puts a lot of pressure on that road as far as, you know, when school buses are running, when people are trying to make turns and there's not a turn lane and that kind of thing. So I was particularly interested in maybe rallying folks up to, you know, let, let them know exactly what kind of problems they have. And that could include our first responders that are constantly going out for their wrecks.
It's a fairly straightforward thing to analyze I-81, but it's another thing to analyze how, how does that, when something happens there, you know, what happens to the people in the network that are just adjacent to it.
Okay. Okay. Well, I think Jennifer's going to work to get that link up and then we can find out the cutoff date. I think it's sometime in late September, but thank you so much for that.
And even without that date, I think that, I mean, that information will still be absolutely good to have a link on there so people can see those displays.
Oh, good. Good. Thank you.
Supervisor Bowe?
I want to thank you for coming out to Clay Street with your fellow engineers. I think that worked out excellently. I want to ask Craig about any status on that H-SIP.
I have not heard anything. I know that Emily Gibson, our planning director, was communicating with, wasn't Paul?
Paul.
Was it Paul? Okay.
Or Andrew Ford.
I don't know that there's any action that the Board has to take. I think that's something that we can submit and admit.
The Board has taken the action. This is a fairly new category of H, that stands for Highway Safety Improvement Program, lower acronyms. It used to be just for, you know, high accident prone type areas. And there was a certain ratio that money spent for benefit for some of these things due because it really wanted to target the high accident. But there's another category of it that'll take into account pedestrian facilities. And so we're actually looking at one in Floyd and we're looking at one here as well.
That's great. I think.
We'll keep it moving.
Appreciate that. Because there's some deadline in November, am I correct?
Yeah. It does have a yearly deadline.
And do you, you all need a certain amount of time to do what you have to do in order to get it in by the deadline?
It shouldn't be, it's not like one of these smart scale project things where there needs to be, the process isn't quite as onerous as that smart scale thing. This will be a little easier to put together. Not that we want to wait till, you know, middle of October. We figure out what we want, how we want to do it, and what it's going to cost, and get that in as soon as possible. And now is the time to be working.
Emily and Paul are the, Emily's the county contact, Paul's the VDOT contact.
And who leads that for us at Clay Street? Who, you know, is it Paul or is it Emily that like, okay, let's, you know?
It would be, I think, because it's kind of a revenue sharing project. It's a county generated project where they come to VDOT and say, hey, we've got this great idea for this, you know, and here's what we'd like to do. It's not much we think it'll cost, but from the VDOT side, especially my local office, we're glad to do that concurrently with you to help you go along and so you're not making false starts or going in the wrong direction and make sure that the application is done just right.
That's great. Also want to ask you about the brush along Clay Street. You know, there's a couple of places up by Floyd Street on at least the north side and then just midway down Clay Street on the south side, there were all those big trees. I don't necessarily want to encourage you to cut them all the way back to the trunks where the line could be, but definitely allow people to, you know, be off the road walking if that's possible, if you could trim the brush.
Okay.
And then I also agree with Supervisor Demott about North Main Street. I appreciate responsiveness and everything that you're doing up there for the safety of our constituents. Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
Supervisor Shepherd?
I have a couple of things. I had a question and I just, I was curious more than anything else. Did I see VDOT employees picking up trash?
Yes, I hadn't mentioned that, but yeah, they do that occasionally. A lot of times along with our mowing, we try not to just take the motors through and scatter it everywhere so they'll do a bit of pickup before they form mowing. But we really did put a push on it. This was a statewide initiative. I didn't, you know, publicize it a lot, but it came out from Richmond that they would like everybody, all the residency offices to, and every county, every area of ours to concentrate a couple of days just before Labor Day long weekend to go pick up some trash. So we took a couple of days there, like whatever, just before Labor Day and did, did a bit of that.
Yeah, I saw that. Thank you. And I had called and talked to a receptionist and I'm not sure she understood exactly what I was talking about, but there's some brush that needs to be cut on Prices Fork Road right where you turn onto Coal Hollow Road. If you're coming from Prices Fork, and I now have a bus stop out there.
Yeah.
And I have to turn around right there. And there's some stuff hanging over the guardrail that if it were back to the guardrail, my sight distance would be doubled at least.
All right.
It'd be a whole lot safer to turn because you have, there's not much vision there. And then there was one thing got fixed, and I don't know who did it over the weekend, but was on Walnut Springs Road.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it's a dead end road. So if you go in, it's fine. Coming back out, as you come, there's a little hill you have to go up just before you top over and you can see Prices Fork Road. There was some dead brush hanging over the road and it was low enough that I had to get over to go around it, which made it dangerous because you couldn't see over that hilltop.
Right.
Well, somebody cut that over the weekend, I don't know who, but anyway. But the rest of that road on that side coming back out, it's, it's growing over the lane. I mean, it's really bad.
Okay.
And I haven't heard any other complaints anywhere else. And thank you for the work you did in Wake Forest.
Thanks. Can we do, we did work a little bit with the school transportation people, giving us some routes that they know about some.
Well, and I called them first.
Yeah.
And they said, we're no longer doing that. You need to call VDOT.
Okay.
As a driver.
I knew, yeah.
And I, that was kind of strange, but anyway.
We usually do, and maybe we need to reach out a little bit to the new Transportation Director and try to work a little bit better.
Yeah.
One of the things I didn't mention, you mentioned Prices Fork Road. This is a locally administered project that the county just, well, they got the bids back. I don't know about the award process, but putting that little turn lane in on Prices Fork. We had the showing out there.
Dan Brew told me he was getting those reviewed and hoped to have a contract ready within the next two weeks to get that moving forward.
Yeah, I knew it went out. I didn't know when it was due back, but.
It's a revenue sharing project with the county that's administering that.
Right. Okay.
But it'll have some former VDOT people, I think, on the project.
Keenly involved, yes.
That are not retired from VDOT that's really working for you all. Not even mentioning Dan.
All right. One, I would echo Supervisor Bowe talked about some of the cutting on Clay Street and Floyd, especially if you're coming out and trying to look to the right. It's grown around the stop sign that's there and it's hard to look back up the hill. So if you were to making a left-hand turn going back down towards Cherry and the like, there's not, not a good sight distance here. You really have to pull almost all the way out into the road.
All right. We'll check it from that perspective.
Sure.
Especially at stop sign.
And then Yellow Sulphur Road, I've gotten, we had a citizen came and addressed the Board and then I've gotten an email, follow-up email. Could you give us an update? I guess it's still the most heavily traveled gravel road in Montgomery County.
It is, yes. We've been working on that bit by bit for a variety of reasons. It's just the easiest part to do. It's something we can do to keep the costs down. And again, you don't get, you know, about a tenth of what you used to get as far as secondary construction money. We probably could have let the whole thing out at one thing and it would have been probably a $5 million project. And that's about 10 years' worth of your, of your money. So we've been working on it bit by bit and from either end. We just finished a section of it. It was about a half mile long, gets you to the bottom part, the flat part where the power lines go over. But the next section that we're going to do will probably be a little bit more public kind of, because this is going to be the toughest part. This is the part that climbs, that climbs up to the highest point probably in Yellow Sulphur and then, then it descends where you can see the quarry, but just before you get to that part, it should be paved up to that part. So it's going to, it's, it's going to take some coordination with that. The road is narrow and we'll talk with some of the people out there, some of the citizens and residents out there, as well as the board members out here, just to see what you want. What do you want from out of this road? We can pave it just the way it is. If we get off the alignment, maybe try to cut some curves by going straight across them, that gets into a lot more land disturbance, which gets into erosion, siltation controls, detention ponds, and things like that, which can double cost to your project. But in the end, we want a, we want a good travelable, travelable road because it is going to be a through road. I don't know how much traffic it will get as a through road. I don't know how much more attractive it will be as an alternate to, say, 460 or Ellet Road going between Christiansburg and Blacksburg and the Valley like that. It's hard to say. It may not increase at all, but you still are going to have school buses going up and down as well as large, larger vehicles like pickup trucks. You want them to be able to pass safely, confidently, and it's going to be a tough fit with the curves in there and the width that we've got. So that's going to be our next one. We'll probably have to get some design help from the consultants to get it right and some probably input from the county and the residents on what you want to see when we're done.
When would you want to see a meeting like that with some of the residents in the county? Next year?
It could be, it could be anytime now. We're done with this part and really we're, we're starting to make those decisions right now on which way we want to go.
Okay.
So the sooner we know exactly what we're going to do, what we're going to build out there, the better.
All right. Thank you. Did that, I know the county administrator had a question for you as well.
Just one quick one, and you may have addressed it earlier and I wasn't tuned in, and I'm sorry. I've had several folks ask me about the pavement markings on Route 8 because some of the, some of the repaving's been striped and some of the patches have not been striped. Is there a timetable on getting it?
Again, those were done by different entities. And so one's going to be a certain subcontractor, one may be our people that were trying to get the part that we did with the patch is done at the same time if we can get that contractor to do it.
Sure.
But I can find, I can try to find out if there's a schedule for that in the chat.
It's not critical, but I had a couple of folks bend my ear this weekend about outcome par. And I actually knew the answer, that it was two different contractors.
It's two different things, yeah. The stuff, the closer Christiansburg, the longer patches, those were done by our people, our state forces, and the part down near Floyd Line was done.
Thanks.
I know Supervisor Bowe had another question for you.
I have two. One is Gallon Road where Bellevue, Bellevue.
Gallon Road.
Yeah. Is that ever going to be paved? I know that they do a lot of business and I'm sure that the state gets a lot of sales tax revenue from them and things like that.
That may be something we look at in the next, next spring at the six-year plan, see how many roads we've got done, but that would, it would be funded through, it's an unpaid road, so, and I think it's got enough vehicles, especially probably the Mount Tabor end. I don't know which end people tend to come in.
It's both.
I believe it's more towards the north end, I think, to the Mount Tabor end, but who knows? It has to have 50 vehicles, the reason I said it's got to have 50 vehicles a day, but I think it's got the 50 at least up near there.
On the weekends, it certainly has.
Yeah, we'll put a counter.
Does it average, like if it's Saturday and Sunday that they have 200 vehicles each, then if you average it throughout the week, is that how it works or does it have to be 50 per day?
They just put a counter out for a couple of days. And if we can do it strategically, we can probably get.
That would be helpful. And then within town of Blacksburg on Gristum Lane, you guys took out, whoever took out the, the speed bumps, are they going back? And are they, are we going to have stripes on that road again?
If it's on Gristum, that would be the town.
Mm-hmm.
I have no idea.
You don't know?
Yeah, it's the town.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there any other questions? David, as always, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you all.
Next item on our agenda is a public address. Anyone who would like to address the Board, you have five minutes. Please state your name and address. There is no one who has signed up, but you don't have to be signed up. Has anyone wished to address the Board? Seeing no one coming forward, I'll go ahead and close public address. The next item on the agenda is consent. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. There's a motion by Supervisor Bowe and a second by Supervisor Shepherd. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bowe?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Demott?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven ahs.
Is there a motion to go into work session? Legislative priorities.
Mr. Chair, and your, and board members in your packet, you have a draft of the legislative priorities for fiscal year 19 that are based on, I say fiscal year 19, the 2019 General Assembly session. These are based pretty much exclusively on the priorities that we had in 2018 that were shared with the, with the General Assembly. I also have one additional one that I'll pass down to you. This is one that staff worked on. Carol, thank you for this, and that is to request support for funding for the planning, development, and implementation of a multi-jurisdictional trail system. This, of course, was not included in last year's request, but is one that the board had indicated you'd like to see us provide. And the last bullet point in the draft agenda was a placeholder for that one. So at this point, the board, the staff is just looking for direction from the board as to, are you okay with the ones that are included? Are there others that you want to include that aren't there? And I guess a question as well is, is, are there any on this list that you want to take off?
I know. We're in work session, so I'll go ahead, and I'll, we'll go once around, and then we'll see where we're at. Supervisor Fidjikowski?
No, I don't have anything.
Vice Chair Damont?
I actually do. And it's kind of coming from my, my other life, my other professional life, through the Virginia Apartment Management Association. I serve on a legislative committee, and we have been getting input about impact fees. And so often in this job, I wear multiple hats. This is one where I do wear multiple hats. Of course, from the development community, talking about impact fees, those are evil and terrible, and we should definitely oppose them. However, I can see their use as a tool, possibly on our side of things. And so I know that there are two Senate bills, and I do not know the numbers, right now, related to impact fees, and I kind of view them, the proffers, the, what we can do with proffers has essentially been gutted. And so our toolbox has had a few, few of our tools taken out, and I view impact fees as potentially another tool in the toolbox. However, I am no expert in planning or development or land use. And so, one, I would wonder how our planning commissioner and our planning director might feel about that. And that led me to also think, do we consult with any of our department heads on our legislative priorities? So do we ask Parks and Rec, is there anything that you see potentially legislatively that the board should be concerned about or looking at? And so I'm wondering, because we're turning in legislative, you know, legislative priorities year after year that are very similar, and I'm wondering if we might solicit input from our experts and see if maybe they might have any input. And then also specifically looking at those impact fees, I'd be interested to find out how Emily Gibson feels about that, if that's something that we should even be discussing or worried about.
We don't solicit from the department directors as a general rule. Generally, the department directors are involved in their associations as well.
Yeah.
Emily, for example, with the American Planning Association, so they, those groups advocate for certain legislative changes. I mean, we can certainly ask. One of, one of the challenges with this, and this goes back several years, and matter of fact, it probably goes back a few years, Supervisor Biggs may remember, at one point in time, we tried to keep the legislative priorities down to one page, so that the, when we went in, we had just a one-page list of the key priorities. But honestly, there's so many that are important, it's hard to, it's hard to limit.
Yeah.
But to answer your immediate question, no, we do not ask the directors at this level.
I mean, is it something that we could consider? Just because, like you said, they're involved in their professional organizations, so they might, I mean, it, it might be something to think about. Just because I would view, for example, Mitchell as more of an expert in parks and rec-related legislative things than I would ever be, nor would I know to put that on a legislative priority list.
I have no problem with that.
So I guess that's, I know I'm supposed to just.
Well, no.
But I'd be interested to hear what everybody up here thinks about that as well. And as far as keeping it to one page, I certainly understand the ease of that.
Yeah. But we could, you know, if it got longer than a page, we could have some key
ones on the front, and, you know, look at these for sure, highlight, 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 and then here is everything we're looking for.
And, you know, we went, I think there were some localities that were really using the proffers as a hammer.
Yeah.
And, and that, there was legislative backlash to that. And so I think that, maybe they went too far with taking the proffers away, and so perhaps some kind of flexibility, and I think that's what you're talking about.
Yeah, exactly.
Impact fees would, would, could be helpful at times on certain developments. And so I don't mind, I would like to explore it more.
Yeah, and I certainly do not profess to be any kind of expert in the impact fees. I think that Emily providing some insight into that would be super useful.
And if there's, you know, with their pending Senate bills, that might be helpful to maybe get a better idea of, of those as well.
Yeah, and I have a very biased opinion, because what I am, the information I am getting from my professional association is anti-impact fees of any kind. So it'd be interesting to hear the perspective of somebody else. But I would, I would like to know how everybody feels about possibly reaching out to department heads and seeing if they have some legislative items that they would like for us to at least discuss amongst ourselves when we're doing this process.
I know that Marty at times over the years has said, you know, brought up different things, like the Board Equalization Board, but also voting precincts and different things from departments and planning. And there was a notice requirement in regards to, and I guess that's still on our legislative session.
Yeah.
But there was another one that I thought that they ended up addressing eventually, and that may have been my first or second year. So sometimes Marty will get, they'll saying, hey, look, this is driving us crazy. Is there anything we can do about it?
I'll talk to Emily about proffers.
Yeah.
Not proffers, but.
Impact fees.
But I don't have a problem with asking the department heads if there's anything.
I think it's a great idea, because in your, in your professional association, you're wearing one hat, but, you know, they, they wear a different hat for us. And they would bring some good information to the table. We get to choose whether or not we want to use it.
Right.
But I think their expertise is definitely worth exploring.
Thank you.
I think it's a good idea. Thank you, April.
Thank you, Todd.
We have a leadership, we have a leadership team meeting on Wednesday, and I'll bring that up.
I appreciate it.
I think it affects the constitutional officers, like the compensation board, of course, the state, the lack of state funding has, it affects them. So I could see that would be a positive, sort of coming together with our constitutional officers and department heads. I could see, you know, I could see that. And then probably, maybe, I don't know if it's too late for this time around, but definitely that's something to think about in the future.
Does that fall under ending unfunded mandates as far as the Equalization Board and things like that? Because one of the things we've listed, I was looking at that, is that kind of fall under where the state is shifting, continues to shift the burden on us, and that's our.
That's our top thing.
That's their number one thing. And we've watched with the constitutional officers, we continue to get a bigger and bigger percentage comes back locally.
And, you know, it might be good that they know what we're doing, too, like we're supporting them, so.
And I believe it was referred to as de-evolution, the devil.
Devolution.
Devolution.
Yeah, the rose.
But, and so we kind of have this, if I remember, we added that last sentence in the first, ending unfunded mandates, that we also have, also shifting the delivery of state services such as transportation should end. Maybe since that's not an issue anymore, we pull that sentence out and put in a sentence about, you know, funding constitutional officers or the like.
I think it's a real problem that, that we could certainly afford to put on our priority list.
Well, it is. I mean, that, that, last several years, I've included that chart in the budget message. It shows the shrinking amount of.
Yeah.
All right, Supervisor Biggs?
Well, of course, I-1's an issue for me. It's more, it's, it's going to take the federal and the state working together to solve this issue. I don't know if that needs to be put anywhere. I know we have the big truck thing, and I'm glad we have that on here about not, you know, we're against, you know, bigger and heavier trucks. But I-1 is a concern, and so anytime I can bring it up, I will. And then another concern that I feel is really sort of reverberating around the state right now is, is teacher salaries, because there is a teacher salary, a teacher salary shortage, that's true, too. But there is a teacher shortage in the state, and it's impacted our county, too. So I don't know, we have down here, you know, talking about education, by fully funding the state standards of quality, basing teacher pay raises on actual positions, not just SOQ. I think we actually need a stronger statement in there about the state putting money into teacher salaries. I don't know. That's my personal opinion there. My other concern, as you all know, is school safety, whether that be resource officers or whatever. I know that at the General Assembly level, they're looking at different things, and, and I would support anything that the state is willing to do in regards to, you know, funding things at the local level that we wouldn't have to, you know, put a lot of money. They need to give us money, in other words, is what I'm saying. But those are certainly some of the things I have been thinking about, school safety, I-1, making a stronger statement about, you know, school employees' salaries. I think that's important.
So could we put, maybe change a little bit of the basing, you know, or add it to another sentence about safety and teachers, overall teachers' salaries, to the recognizing that the state's role in funding quality education?
Since they don't do it.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think it's great. Yeah.
So those would be sort of the, you know, like, I don't know, you know, we could work with the wordsmithing if people think it's important to put in, but those are what I feel strongly about.
I support that.
Sir, Supervisor Bone?
I, that was top on my list also, but I would also extend that to the Sheriff's Department, because, and maybe I don't understand how this works, but it seems to me that Sheriff's Department gets a raise, then the, you know, state police get a raise, and then it goes back and forth. But if we could even that out, I would highly encourage us to just kind of cruise along and let people get raises to keep up with inflation and, and stuff. And similarly for the schools. So anything that we can do to help, and I don't know if it's just the sheriff's office, it's just something that I've heard that, you know, oh, they got a raise last year, right? Oh, that's great, but you should be getting a raise every year, because there's always inflation, right? And the same thing for teachers, so I don't know how to, how to do that. And then the, the other thing that is important to me, even though it really won't impact my district anymore, is for the citizens' complaints, comments, things like that on the pipeline, is there anything, and it's really for future, you know, pipelines whenever they occur, you know, the Water Control Board, the DEQ, even the executive branch really haven't been very responsive to, to citizens' complaints, comments, direction. In a lot of instances, they just want, you know, the pipeline to go in safely, you know, reduce the impact on the environment and things like that. I'd like to somehow encourage that the, you know, state government have more personnel to properly respond to citizens' complaints and comments and suggestions in each of those areas, because I think about the, the complaints that I've been copied on that have been sent to the DEQ or Governor Northam or Water Control Board, and I hear nothing, you know? And I think that's inappropriate when we're here in our county, just trying to do good work to make sure that the least amount of environmental impact is actually occurring. Is there anything that we can do to say, please, have better customer service? You know, something like that?
This would go to the legislative, I mean, it would go to the executive branch.
Right. This is, I guess, and I understand what you're saying, but I, and this is a Republican saying, just, if we criticize the governor and the legislative, yes, there's some Republicans who love saying that the, the governor's doing a terrible job because he's a Democrat. I just don't know that saying that his office needs to be more responsive in our legislative priorities is where, I don't, I don't think that's going to help us try to get some of the things that we want on this list to be off the list anymore.
You can put it on here, but they don't have no control of it.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I would think that the legislature would, you know, they approve the budget or whatever and make it a priority, but make sure that they have enough people to be responsive. And I'm not really trying to criticize.
You're talking about the state employees.
I'm just saying, hey, let's try to make this better, really. I'm saying, you know, who am I to say how to, how to control, you know, or how to design each of those organizations? But from my perspective, it would be better if they had more people or one more person in each of those areas to be more responsive, to be more responsive. And if it's just saying, no, we're not going to do, do something about it, that's better than just not responding. Not responding is just, that's not government working.
Yeah.
So, and it's not political to me. It's more about, you know, and customer service is not the right phrase that I should be saying, but, and, and I think you know where I'm coming from. And I don't mind it being lower on the priority list by any stretch of imagination, because the impact, if anything were to happen, you know, isn't going to affect my district ever, you know, because I, unless another pipeline comes through, which is like, which is possible, right? But I think that, I think that there's some opportunity for improvement.
I'd be happy to look at it. I, I just, like I said, for me, I, I know when we go down to Richmond, we've got this list, and we try to go over it. And sometimes, some of the things that we're talking with legislators, they've seen it before, and their eyes kind of glaze over. Some of the things that you can get, and you can maybe, they're on that fence, and there's some of the, they're new, and maybe you can address them. It, I guess, asking them to add staff to DEQ could be a possibility if that's, but I, I don't know that it's going to address this issue, because it wouldn't be hired until after this pipeline's going to be built. But I, I'd be happy to at least look at it and see if that's one of the priorities, at least from my perspective.
So you're wanting, it sounds like what you're wanting is, you're wanting the people that work at the state level, the state employees, to effectively communicate or, you know, with citizens, is what you're really saying, no matter what department it is. If a citizen sends something in, you would like a response.
That's right. And, and the point is, is there aren't that many pipelines that come through. But when they do come through, they have to have a certain level of responsiveness in the state plan.
Maybe rather than legislative priorities, we develop a letter to send to, because those are under the executive branch.
That's kind of what I'm thinking, because I can't see a Senate bill or a House bill that would address that.
Yeah.
But I can see saying, you know, we noticed X, and the lack of response caused Y, and, you know, there's a flaw in this process. Yeah, I can't, I can't see it being addressed legislatively, but I can certainly, to your point, I get it, because I, you know, there's nothing more frustrating than putting your time and effort into, you know, sending in some comments or problems that you're having, and then crickets. That's extremely frustrating.
Yeah, however we address that. I mean.
Yeah. I think that might be a better resolution from my perspective, is a letter to that, just because I can't think of a legislative.
Fix.
Yeah. Yeah.
Separation of powers also.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I appreciate you talking through.
Maybe we could write that letter and put Ms. Bone's name up top.
Yeah.
Fair enough.
And Mr. Fidjikowski, if he's interested.
He's asleep.
Separation of powers also.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I appreciate you talking through.
Maybe we could write that letter and put Ms. Bone's name up top.
Yeah.
Fair enough.
And Mr. Fidjikowski, if he's interested.
He's asleep.
I don't know if it's going to do much good, but.
Yeah.
I think it's important.
Well, I think, you know, you could send them to the secretaries and copy them to the governor's offices, the governor appoints the secretaries, and the deputy secretaries. I mean, just send it all out.
Supervisor Shepard?
I have a question, just for clarity more than anything else. Did I understand, Mr. Matt is right, you want to remove the last one and add this one?
Well, we, on the, on the list.
It says Valley to.
It says Valley to Valley Trail, but there was nothing there. So this is the, this is.
The meat.
Verbiage for that.
Yeah.
Placehold.
I looked at the wrong one, probably.
Yeah. So that just goes with.
Okay, okay. Yeah, that's fine. And, and I, and I like what Mr. Moss suggested. I think that's a good idea.
Thank you.
And also, I like to marry about I-1. However, I, I think it's going to be more of, to get a major, something major done, it's going to be federal. You know, I don't think the state's going to address that, but. You know, I don't think the state's going to address that, but worth a try, I guess.
Well, they're very worried about it at the state level.
Oh, I know.
And, and so it's going to take, I mean, I don't know how they're going to do anything, but it's going to probably take both to do something, because localities can't do it at all.
They're going to craft the same thing they do about your teachers' wages, we don't have any money.
Well, they have ways to raise revenue, they just don't want to do it.
That's all I have.
Supervisor King?
Well, you know, when we went to the White House, you know, they brought up 81.
Yeah.
So they know about it.
Yeah, they know about it all right.
Yeah.
Yeah, they wouldn't let us bring it up, they already knew that we were going to bring it up, so they got a head start.
So there comes the Montgomery County people. Every year I'll bring the same one up, and Chris, you know which one I'm talking about.
I do, too.
I do.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Cigarette tax, I don't agree with that.
I can only state from my perspective, just like I don't mind paying taxes on the alcohol I consume, it, that's a sin tax. I don't have to have a beer, I don't have to have a bourbon, there's sometimes, some nights I think I have to have a bourbon after some of these meetings, but I just look at it, I will say that I got asked an interesting question at the Citizens Academy this past week, and they said, you know, this tax could affect some of the lowest income, because lower income folks tend, there tend to be more smokers, or higher percentage of smokers. At the same time, I just don't think that folks have to have a cigarette, it's not like medicine, it's not like food, it's not like shelter, and so from my perspective, diversifying our tax base and having the same taxing authorities as the towns, and we are specifically saying that we would use this tax to support our schools and capital funding, so I'm supportive of leaving it on, I understand that you're opposed, you and I may have to agree to disagree on this one, at least from my perspective.
Well, as long as you know I'm right.
I know that there's been some suggestions, do we want to try to send a draft, some emails around and ask staff to craft those?
And that's the reason we had it on work session tonight, there's, you know, we'd like to get this in final form and back to the board, well, we can have it back to you by the next meeting, but really, as long as you adopt it in October, it gives us time to get it prepared and get it to the General Assembly in time for the session, and one of the things we talked about was, each year we usually try to have a pre-legislative dinner with our delegates and delegates and senators, and we were going to look at, the last couple of years, it's been the first week or so in December, simply because when we have one board meeting in December, and November gets crowded up pretty quick, so would you like for us to start working to try to find a date in early December for that?
Yes, please. Yes.
Okay.
So we need to have this ready then by early December for that dinner?
For sure, but we, we hope to have it all wrapped up in October for you.
October.
Yes.
And, you know, the one other thing is, we got really close with the eliminating split voting, I mean, we really got it through the legislature before it was.
Well, we got it through, yeah.
Yeah, and it got vetoed, and so maybe this will be the lucky year, and I forgot how much the registrar said, just these voting precincts, it's about sixteen, seventeen thousand dollars if I remember correctly, and then on top of that, these, the sanctity of your ballot, and some, one of these districts has three houses.
Three people, yeah.
And so if only one person votes, everybody knows exactly how that individual voted. And, and to me, the sanctity of that secret ballot is important, but, and then we want people to get out and vote, we want them to make it easy for them to vote, and to me, when you've got precincts that just have a handful of houses.
Like a little hook in, yeah.
Yes, it doesn't make any sense.
That's one of the, that's one of the few times in my career that I ever remember a legislative priority that actually got passed and then got shot down by the governor. But he, his, his point was that he wasn't going to do it for any of them, but I thought ours made a whole lot of sense.
And if had bipartisan support, it's not going to change anybody's election, it's just a handful of houses, a few, is it even a hun, a few hundred people at tops?
Not even that many.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, but you know, it's actually been on one-on-one vote before.
I know, I know, but it's not likely to change it, how's that? Well, that being said, does staff have enough guidance?
Yes, sir, we'll have you something back.
Are we, are we going to set a, a limit on the pages, because, I mean, what I just heard was some fantastic suggestions.
Just use a like six-point pond.
Yeah, a little pond, a little pool.
Or are we going to, are we going to go through like a.
We'll get creative.
Slugfest to try to eliminate some and prioritize them, or, I don't know how we're going to do that, because.
A cage match?
None of them all, none of them.
Just the person that I can bring.
We'll let Vicky work her magic, and then we'll come back to it.
And we may be able to eliminate some language and to.
Yeah.
Of existing, so. All right, is there a motion to come out of closed session, I mean, work session, excuse me?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
First, motion by Supervisor Biggs, second by Supervisor Demots, Madam Clerk, would you please call the rolls?
My vote, please.
I didn't ask if there was any discussion, but anybody want to discuss coming out of work session? Okay.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Demots?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Benn?
Aye.
Chair of the House?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next item is a special transfer in regards to, there's fifty-seven thousand dollars have been allocated for one additional school resource officer, leaving a balance of twenty-seven thousand, this resolution transfers seven thousand dollars to the Sheriff's Department. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And discussion?
I would like to discuss a little bit. I'm not, I'm not against this altogether, but I go through Radford about twice a week, they have one of these setting up on Tyler Avenue. You run thirty-five, people pass you like you're not even moving. I just don't understand what good this will do.
And I don't know if, I, I know I've talked, Supervisor Fidzikowski, one of the things that he wanted on, and I think Supervisor Bone as well, and I don't mean to speak for them, but it's, and the, or the sheriff, but it's my understanding when they asked to put this on there, specifically Steve, is to try to keep track of, it'll, it'll not just flash up, but it'll also keep track to get some proof, so if, a lot of people are saying people are speeding on Route Eight, and they're going seventy miles an hour, we're going to be able to have documentation, but it's also going to be that reminder to that person going seventy, that they're going seventy miles an hour instead of fifty-five. So that's, at least, from mine, my perspective, I think it will help us a little bit on those areas to remind folks of how fast they're going, and also to help us get a better idea. I know we can do it the stealth version like we did on Clay Street, but sometimes just letting folks know how fast they're actually going isn't necessarily a bad thing.
Well, I would like to see us use this money to pay overtime for the deputies to run radar and write tickets. I think that would be more educational to the people out there speeding.
Be more lucrative to the defense attorneys, I know that, but just pick them.
Well, I have an interesting point, when I was working, I have set, you know, location, I won't say just behind them, because I wasn't right behind them, near those, those things and written tickets.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think these, these boards are meant to eliminate this meeting, but it does, these boards will do several things for us. Number one, we seem to get a high number of requests for speed surveys. This is a way to, to get that done, because these particular machines will record the data, so we'll have it.
Oh, I don't, I don't think it's a bad thing.
Instead of, instead of, you know, constantly sending things to VDOT to do, we can kind of do a preliminary check of it through the sheriff, and I think it would be much quicker and it'd give us more information. But there are a lot of folks that are out there that are speeding, that just needed to be reminded of it. It's never going to eliminate enforcement, you got to have enforcement, but I don't think the sheriff's office really has a problem in that end of it, I think they, they do enforcement now, and they have projects, I know they get money from DMV to run radar and do things like that, so, you know, I don't think that's going to be, I don't, I think that's going to continue, but I think this is a really good tool that, that helps folks to realize how fast they're going. I've told a lot of people, in my twenty-five years of writing radar tickets, I don't think that people on 81 have slowed down at all, so you can say that about enforcement, too. People are people, but I think with this board, by giving them, by letting them know that they're speeding, it takes care of the honest folks. The ones that are going to speed, they're going to continue to speed, probably even after they get a ticket, they're going to continue to speed. But I, I just think it's just a very good tool, and I know a lot of citizens have asked me in various places in my district about doing something, and this is something that can be done fairly quickly, with not, with not a whole lot of trouble, so I, I think it's a way to, to help the citizens also, so I'm definitely in favor of it.
I'd also like to add that when there was such a flurry of pipeline emails and all these trucks going down Mount Tabor, and they're going too fast, you could just put one of these out there and it'd probably record that the trucks weren't going that fast, I'm not saying they were or weren't, but at least we can take care of that really quickly instead of, you know, VDOT gets all the requests, and, and so we have some control over it. But yes, in my district, definitely, there's a lot of requests for speed studies, and if we can take care of them pretty quickly, relatively speaking, I think it's worth the seven thousand dollars for sure.
Well, and I see your point, Todd, about it not serving as a deterrent, because it isn't for a lot of people going to deter them from speeding. I hadn't considered it as a tool, as, as you were talking about, I hadn't considered it from that perspective, so that presents a little bit of an interesting difference. And as a tool, I can see the value in it. As a deterrent, no, I think people are, are not necessarily going to be deterred, because they know this is not like taking a picture of me, it's just, we're at a twenty-five and I'm going seventy, oops, you know, I, I totally get what you're saying there, but I think it could have potential as a tool for us.
I think it does also help people check their speedometer, because a lot of speedometers don't read right.
Yeah.
You know, so it is a little bit of a tool.
But I, I should have asked you, the one you're talking about in Radford, is that a permanent one?
Yep.
See, these aren't meant to be permanent, they're meant to be moved around, so you kind of get a little bit of that shock value, if somebody is, let's face it, I got to tell this story. In the State Police, we get a lot of requests for speeders in neighborhoods, and usually the first person that we stop for speeding is the one that made the complaint, to have us out there in the first place. So this would fix that person, without, you know, without, without too much money.
All right, now, we kind of went out of order a little bit, so Vice Chair Demots, did you?
I don't have anything else to add, thank you.
Supervisor Biggs?
Oh, I, I look at it as a tool, too, and I'm one of those people that, you know, the one, that's the permanent one on South Gate, it's supposed to be twenty-five, and sometimes I'm coming around there at twenty-eight, and like, oh my goodness, I got to, you know, slow down. I mean, I'm one of those people, like Steve said, that, okay, it would help you remember what you're doing, you know, but, but yeah, I support it, and I think it would be good to move it around, and I would be interested, is this something that could be used on four sixty, where they're always talking about coming, you know, towards Blacksburg, speeding all the time? Is that something that could be used there?
It'd be used anywhere except for the interstate, I don't know that they would set up out there.
I don't know about multiple lanes, maybe the sheriff does.
That's where I see a lot of speeders.
Because that's, that's the difference, multiple lanes.
Sheriff, do you wish to address more of the multiple lanes in four sixty?
Yeah. In the county park.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I don't know about eighty-one, I think that's a little much. But what we're looking at, and this, we'll probably clarify for you, we're looking at two separate models, the permanent version, I, I don't believe in that at all, I think that's pointless, if you're going to leave it up there forever, you might as well run radar. The two we're looking at, one is, is very movable, very easy, it's just the board itself, it's all self-contained. The other one we're looking at can be more permanent, it has a solar panel and a battery pack, so for our long-range problems that we have all the time, a pilot comes to mind, we can leave one out there for a month, and then we can, we can move it. But as far as the tool, you guys have already had ammunition from the stealth stack board that we put on Clay Street, and that's just a box, and that's an old box, but it's still collecting the data that you needed. These will do the same thing and better. As far as four sixty, you know, we could, we could put the more permanent one out there, but a road that big, these are, these are very expensive, obviously, and, and they're not that big. The bigger display you get, the more of that you, so, we're looking for them to be very useful.
Thanks.
Thank you, Sheriff, appreciate it. Unless, did anybody have any questions, Sheriff? Supervisor Bone?
No other comments or questions.
Supervisor Shepard?
No other questions.
Supervisor King? Supervisor Fidzikowski?
Good.
All right, there's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the rolls?
Mr. King?
Won't just be part of record, if you would, please. I would rather spend this money paying overtime for deputies. No.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Demots?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Benn?
Aye.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Chair of the House?
Aye.
Six ayes, one no.
Next item is county attorney's report.
No report, Mr. King.
Next item is county administrator's report.
Mr. Chair, just a couple items this evening, I did want to bring you update on, bring an update on a couple of facilities issues that we've talked about. We have requests for proposals going out for what's called a final architectural review for the old sheriff's office, that was issued last Thursday, and the proposals are due back October second, and once we have some more information on estimated costs and timeline on the old sheriff's office, I'll be back in front of you with that information, so we can talk about next steps with that. Also, there have been meetings held with the leadership of the Ryner Rescue Squad, and they've been meeting with the leadership of the Ryner Fire Department to discuss the conversion of the future former fire department building for the rescue squad, so some work's going on there as well, because one of the things we'll need in the not-too-distant future is a cost estimate of what that's going to take, because, and they are going to be coming out of the ground with a new fire department, they've been working on those footers quite extensively, but that, that project is still on schedule, so, those are two projects that we'll be moving on in the weeks ahead. I did want to mention two upcoming community meetings, I know we've sent some information out about the one on September seventeenth, which is next Monday night at six o'clock, that one will be at the Blacksburg Middle School Cafeteria at six P.M. That is to give the board an opportunity to review some of the current projects that are going on with the county, and also give citizens that may be interested in attending an opportunity just to come and ask any questions that you may have of the Board of Supervisors. The next community meeting after that will be on Monday, October fifteenth, that one is at six o'clock, and it's in Ryner, and I don't recall off the top of my head.
The high school.
Is it the high school? I believe it's at the high school. The primary focus of that meeting will be to talk about the parks and recreation planning that we'll be doing for the property, the till property there in Ryner that we've purchased, where the fire station's being constructed now, but we're also beginning to work on plans for the Ryner and Charlesville areas for development of parks in those two, so that'll be October fifteenth. More information to follow.
Did you say the high school or the middle school?
High school.
High school.
Now, the one Monday night is Blacksburg Middle School.
Middle school, okay.
Yes, and then the one October fifteenth, I'm, I'm pretty positive it's Auburn High School, but we'll get information out on that. Last but not least, as I'm sure everybody's aware, we are closely watching the weather this week, we had a couple of meetings today, I imagine we'll have a couple imagine we'll have a couple of meetings every day this week to discuss preparations for Hurricane Florence. The biggest concerns in Montgomery County, I believe, are going to be rain and then, and then any associated wind damage that may occur because of the excessive rain that can cause trees to fall and knock out power. So I really want to encourage people to pay attention to, to local media. I would encourage you not to pay attention necessarily to social media. I had a department director come in today with a map that showed thirty-four inches of rain over Montgomery County. I really don't think that's going to happen. Anything could happen, but I really don't think that's going to happen. And I want to encourage folks, in addition to the local media and the National Weather Service, on the county's webpage, if you go to montva.com, M-O-N-T-V-A.com/Florence, I think I spelled this right. Correct me if I'm wrong. F-L-O-R-E-N-C-E. That's Florence. Okay. Sometimes I get those messed up. We will continuously update that information as well, should there be a need for shelters, should there be a need for any actions on behalf of the county. That's where we'll post it. We will keep our social media platforms up as well. But I would encourage folks, as I encourage all the time, is if you're looking at social media, make sure it's a reliable source. And one of my favorite sayings is trust but verify. If you see something, please verify, because there's a lot of stuff out there. That's all I have.
Supervisor Biggs?
I was just going to ask, are we sending a thank you letter to President Sands for the local government football game?
Sorry, King.
Okay. And that's all.
Supervisor Bone?
I would like to thank my fellow supervisors for all the support and accommodations for all the Clay Street comments and neighbors. I realize that that was a long, drawn-out process, but I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Supervisor Shepard?
I just want to say I'm sorry I couldn't make the football game. My wife was out of town and had other things to do. But anyway, that's all I have.
Supervisor King?
No report.
Supervisor Fidzikowski?
Yeah, I'd like to throw out a shout for our Beans and Banjos coming up in Shawsville. And I really should have written down the date, because that would have been very helpful. But I'm...
It's coming up, right?
Yeah, it's coming up very soon. I think it's either the, it's on a Saturday. It's either the 22nd or the 29th of September. But I will, I will update that. But it is a good event.
If you get that to us, we'll get it out.
Yes, I will. That's all I got.
Vice Chair Demots?
Just a couple of things. First, our two meeting reminders. The Radford Army Ammunition Plant is having, having their quarterly update meeting at the Christiansburg Library on September 27th at 6:30 PM. No RSVP is necessary, so anybody that is interested in attending that meeting is welcome. If all the chairs are filled, they'll, they'll let you stand up along the wall. So again, that's at the Christiansburg Library on September 27th at 6:30 PM. We also have, for people that might be interested, the Falling Branch Elementary School dedication ceremony of their new spaces. That's on the 18th of September, so next week. That's at 7:00 PM at Falling Branch Elementary School. From the invitation, it does not appear that reservations or RSVPs are necessary to that as well. It's kind of like a community open house type event. Come see the new spaces at Falling Branch. And then a final thing is just to update this board on the Renew the New event. This was the third Renew the New that we had. This is a regional event, so it's the third participating year for Montgomery County. It's not the third time that the event has happened. Over thirteen miles of river and roadway were cleaned up. Over five tons of trash and tires were removed from the New River watershed, and over three hundred and fifty people volunteered for this event. So the participating counties are Giles, Montgomery, and Pulaski, and then also the city of Radford participates. So over three hundred and fifty people came out. And on Montgomery County's end, a special thank you to Parks and Recreation staff who spent a lot of time on a Saturday, making sure that this was a successful event for Montgomery County. So that is very much appreciated. And that's all that I have.
Well, thank you very much. I don't have anything to report.
Chris, I forgot to add something. Tomorrow evening at the Christiansburg Library at 6:00, the author Beth Macy is going to be there. And she, of course, has written the book Dope Sick. It's, I don't, the only way I can describe the book is that it's addictive. You feel like you're right there along the corridor of I-81, and you know the places and the people that the oil crisis has, you know, really taken a toll on. So if anyone is free tomorrow, that is at 6:00 at the Christiansburg Library.
Anything else? This meeting is adjourned.